I have order thirty-one.
It's ordered.
Order thirty-one. Order thirty-one. And, um, let's see, uh, first order of business is approval of the agenda. And if we flip over, agenda eight, um, the benchmarking. We're going to table that pending, um, further discussion by the various committees that have, that are dealing with that. That's all those documents that are out, but, yeah. Any other corrections, additions?
I move to approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, it's good. Next slide is the minutes.
You guys didn't get the September minutes in your package, right here.
So regarding the August minutes, you'll recall from asking if we couldn't decide whether we're able to hear or not, and then at the end of the meeting, if we can clear that we're at one.
It was there, yeah. So I actually moved to approve those minutes. Oh, are we, okay, are we approving for August or December?
August.
Okay, August. Second, second, August? Okay.
That was only a question.
On favor of approving the August minutes?
Aye.
On my approved. Second, uh, minutes before us are the September minutes. Star of the whole recent meeting. I think I saw anything on minutes. I make motion to approve September's separate minutes. All favor of approving the September minutes, let's do nothing.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Yes, uh, we have public comments, and at this time, will we have comments from the public?
Yes, I have a public comment, aye. So for months I've come in here, and I've told you, backed it up with hard evidence, that Rick Meyer has no idea what he's doing with the lawyer requests. You've all done nothing. People's personal home addresses, phone numbers, personal email addresses, including some members of this council, have been leaked by Rick Meyer. And I've asked you to please do something, and you've refused to do so. So now, as I'm sure you know, Rick Meyer released last week Alex Frazier's full unredacted social security number. That was in the document where nothing was redacted. Her home address, all of her personal school information, none of it was redacted. Now, those of you who were on the Finance Committee meeting will remember that at the last meeting, Rick Meyer told us that not only does he personally vet each and every lawyer request and make sure that they're to the letter of the law, but that the council also vets them. That's on YouTube. Rick can roll his eyes, but it's the truth. So how does a social security number get through Carol Zies, Rick Meyer, and Chris the lawyer? I've asked you, I've pleaded with you, because my personal information has been released, her personal information has been released, your personal information has been released, and yet you do nothing about it. I, I don't get it. What else has to happen for you to realize, hey, this guy is running this library into the ground? I've been showing Katie Etchison's messages to people, they have had a much different reaction than you guys did. They don't think Katie Etchison saying that she hates black people is funny, they don't think it's a joke, and they don't think it's sarcastic. But you all did it. Each and every one of you saw those and decided, hey, it's okay for Decatur Public Library managers to say that they hate black people. Now it's okay for Wilfred Grimley over here to get up and try to accost me in an open meeting. It's okay for Rick Meyer to release people's personal social security numbers. That's a manager here. Every single person who works here, their personal information is not trustworthy in the hands of Rick Meyer. And if you're trying to tell me that you don't think it's that big of a deal, why don't each and every one of you look into my camera and slowly tell me your social security numbers? Let's put that theory to the test. So I'm asking you once again, this needs to be made available to the public. You need to release this to the public, but hey, you messed up. You're releasing people's social security numbers. Do you realize how serious that is? Badmouthing the homeless, releasing social security numbers, naming patrons and talk speculating about their mental health? Is there nothing that this board won't, won't sink to? You're all a disgrace, and every single one of you should resign. Thank none of you for your time.
Excuse me, can I, I, I don't know who lawyer, William Burford?
This care, you're right here.
You mean, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't see how many of us.
Yeah, you can see it on YouTube.
Okay. And I'd like to say a small thing. And these are not isolated incidents. And, um, in a, my name is Paul Baker. Um, in a lawyer that we had to send in for review because it was heavily redacted, I listed fourteen separate incidents, hence to the lawyer's response, hence that Rick or whoever he delegated to did not redact. That's personal email addresses for Mark Sorenson, that is Brad Zantara's, his cell phone number, that is, there's multiple email addresses that have been missed. As this keeps happening, and over and over and over again, and it's, it seems be, it's because people aren't taking it seriously, I think, that the public wants information and has the right to the information. And there's no reason a social security number that is right next to a home address should have made it out of this library, eh, for a staff member. All right, that's unacceptable in such an extreme manner, especially nowadays. He's, he's, because that so easily could have went to people that would put that out there without a second thought, wouldn't say anything to management here or about, you know, oh, somebody's personal information. That's their identity. They had name, they had home address, they had social security number. That's somebody's entire identity right there, and it just walked right out of the library. Eh, that's not acceptable. I don't understand why it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Next, I'm on the agenda is written communications, Paula. And do we have any written communications?
No, we have two.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, city librarians report.
I'm directed to the, the third item from the chart. That's the charts. Madonna mentioned a couple of times that you'd like to, to see visual representation, and I'm hoping that you guys find this, this helpful. And I'm gonna, gonna focus on that unless you have it, uh, any other questions on, on the rest of it. The, the first one kind of illustrates circulation by target audience, so adult, young adult, childrens, and then the total. And that's for the month of September twenty nineteen compared to twenty eighteen. Then there's the twelve-month trend, so it's the last twelve months compared to the twelve months prior to that.
That's a rolling, rolling month.
Right, it gives, it gives a, uh, you know, sometimes you can have a, a month that's particularly good or particularly bad that may be misleading, so, uh, add the twelve month in there. Then it's broken down by material type. So this is only physical items, this isn't electronic items at all. So, uh, physical books, and then video materials, whether it's a video game or DVD, audio materials, that's music or audio books, magazines and periodicals, and then other, other items, loan, physical items, typically that's, uh, some kind of equipment like the hotspots.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought that was. I was trying to figure out what other material was.
And then the total there. So that's, uh, for September. The next page gives you the twelve-month trend for that. And we're looking at, uh, the, uh, electronic materials, electronic resource use in September. So circulating electronic materials are those things that a patron checks out and has a, it has a due date. So it has a date where it automatically goes back. Successful retrieval of electronic information is more databases, classes, that kind of thing, it does not have a timeframe on it. And then the totals of the electronic use. You can see that, and the trend is going in the right direction. The next, the next page is the twelve-month trend for that, uh, those particular items. And then you add them all up to, and get to total collection use. So, uh, September and then the twelve-month trend are both on that same chart. Inner library loans for September in twelve-month trend. You can see that's, that's going down whether it's received or sent.
But that makes sense considering the fact that electronic is on up, because we wouldn't need to do the air library or bar graphs if we can't do, because of licensing issues.
So, uh, the rest of it is bar graphs because it's easier to, uh, put the labels on it. And this is the change, uh, in, in the form of percentage, uh, in circulation by material type. So total physical circula, uh, circulation went down almost eleven percent in September from September of twenty eighteen. Magazines and periodicals have been in a free fall, but for some reason in September, it didn't do quite so badly. Uh, didn't do quite so badly. But you see, audio is, is really, really dropped, almost nineteen percent. Then the next page looks at those trends by, by target audience for September. Yeah, young adult, huge drop, and that's been consistent for the last couple of years. Children's is the best performer with a two percent decline. Next page is the, uh, change in, for the month of September for electronic use, uh, and then the total collection use. So if you add in electronic stuff, the total collection use only went down three percent. We're, we're looking at thirty-two percent increase in circulating and forty-one percent increase in the database use. The next, the next page is, uh, the twelve-month trend by target audience. And it's very similar to what we saw in September, although there's a, there's more of a drop in the children's. And that, uh, the percentage change in number of adult materials should be nine point three percent, not ten point three percent. So the twelve-month trend, uh, the next one for material type, it's the other items are, you know, hundred fifty-six percent increase. But that's because in that, in that time period, we didn't have the, it's, it accounts for almost nothing. Uh, and it's, uh, you know, we didn't even have the hotspots.
Sorry, sorry. Is it new there with you?
Right. And there you see the magazines and periodicals in the twelve, twelve-month trend are really way down, almost twenty-one percent. So September was.
Borrow a hotspot to take home?
Right, yep.
Very thoughtful, as you can tell.
Uh, and the very last page is the twelve-month trend in, uh, in electronic and total collection use. Again, the twelve-month trend again, electronic for the whole collection is a three percent decline rather than that, that eight and nine percent decline that we're seeing because electronic stuff is going up so much, and it was a huge bump in September. So I'm, I'm hoping that you find this to be helpful, and I'm, I'm gonna have, as I flush this out, and this is a work in progress, twenty-eight, this was not done in twenty eighteen, so I'm still popular in the twenty eighteen, so we'll have more comparison numbers to, to have. And then as far as the, uh, the more narrative reports, uh, let's see, in the month of September, Robert, Matt Wilkerson, Carol Zieson, fulfilled, they have a refund to twenty-three lawyer Few of us attended a webinar on sexual harassment, and we're gonna be making that available to more of the staff, it's a, uh, we'll get it for a discount, oh yeah. Let's see, Robert completed Six Sigma Green Belt training in, uh, the month of September.
He's a mentor, yeah.
Let's see, uh, we worked, we worked with, uh, several partners, and I'm bringing, uh, Dr. Professor James Wong, uh, who's, is, is set up in September. And as you can see, I, I focused on under Programs, Resources, and Services, the, the various collaborative efforts that they've been, they've been working on with the outside entities.
I have another question. Um, what's the parent leadership training?
Parent Leadership Training Institute is something we did last year. Raffael Prangie from Milken University has kind of spearheaded that. And what they, it's a pretty rigorous, uh, training, it's a big-time commitment for those involved, and what it's doing is training parents of children to become leaders in the community. They had a, I, when, uh, Raffael first came and pitched the partnership to me, uh, I think probably in the late twenty seventeen, I said, this sounds fantastic, and, uh, she said she wanted to have twenty-five people involved, and I said, that sounds impossible, but if you get it done, we'll, we'll have the partner with you on it. Uh, she got it done, and, uh, it was, again, it was a weekly, uh, two-hour training, and they're all parents of children, so they brought their kids here. Uh, and Milken helped out with the childcare, and we had different programs planned each, I believe it was Thursday nights, uh, for, uh, for the kids. And it was a, it was, it was pretty successful. This year they are, they are struggling to find the recruits, I believe, but, uh, it seems to be making progress.
So how long is a commitment for, in each cohort?
It's like three months.
Three months every week?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, obviously, the transition then is, is involvement in community boards or various boards?
Right. And they have to do a, it's, it's not just specifically about board work, although we do have training for that here too, who is then conducts, but, uh, this is just leadership in general. And they, and they have to have, there's a final project that they have to do to plan something that will have an impact, a positive impact on the community, and, uh, the, the first cohort was really, really enthusiastic.
What's your, what's your age on that?
I don't know.
Because they do have the Youth Leadership Institute.
Well, this is, this is, they're, I mean, they're, they're, the parents are the ones who are being trained, so it's, uh, I mean, they're typically in their, their twenties and thirties, but.
Right. Little different segment there.
Yeah, definitely.
The segment, it tends to be totally swamped with diapers and runny noses and all the other crises, and then boom, sounds of soccer, soccer.
I want to point out that, uh, for the Archives and Special Collections Department, we're beginning to make, uh, good progress on, uh, processing of the, the DMH collection, and we're, we're working on a, on a, on an amended agreement for those, for those items.
What sorts of things are included in each cohort?
It's, it's all kinds of stuff. It's their foundation records, uh, but there's also, uh, just hospital business records in there too. So, uh, that's being, that's all being digitized.
Photos, ads.
Yep.
I'm very curious, is that the one that we were asking if, uh, the leader or the ownership would cause an issue with, yeah?
Yes. So the, the initial agreement, it's, it's interesting, because our, they signed our agreement, which says it's ours. And we signed their agreement, which says it's theirs. So I've had a talk with them, and we've worked out a compromise of a ten-year lease that can be renewed for another ten years after that. We just wanna, I mean, I just wanted some kind of, uh, it, it's, well, what I really wanted was some kind of indication that we wouldn't put all the labor into it, and once it's all straightened out and, and preserved and made findable, they say, we want it back. And I don't believe that's what's gonna happen, uh, you know.
But you gotta protect yourself, because there's no point in us paying for it if they want it back.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that's what Karen Schindler is going to do, but Karen's not gonna be there forever, you know? Or there's gonna be change, change over here, there's gonna be change over there. You write, you don't write an agreement for the people in the room, you write an agreement so that the next person has guidelines.
On the, uh, system administration, the nine hours, is that, um, I don't remember what?
Uh, it's resolved now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It was, uh, but it, by the, by this writing, it was not, well, by, by the end of September, it was not resolved, but it is now resolved. There's been a couple of, uh, glitches here and there, but it's, uh, you know, it's not going down for hours and hours at a time, when it was before we placed it.
And we're doing TED Talks here?
TED, TEDx Talks, yeah, uh-huh.
I said that at my daughter's school.
And the last, uh, the last one was pretty, pretty well-attended. I mean, you know, my hat's off to, uh, Carol Zies and Alyssa Henkel, because, uh, the first few were not well-attended, and they stuck with it, and it's, it's, it's growing, and we're getting applications to speak at our TEDx Talks from all over the country.
That's awesome.
And we're, we've decided to focus on local, but we're getting applications for all over the place.
I mean, I like the idea of local, maybe we want one to, from outside.
And at some point, at some point, we may, we may decide to go that direction, but right now, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on.
Just put some map.
Yeah, I also highlighted, I, it's just really nice, this item, um, that you guys went to teach your Christian nation night at the children's museum, but that's a, that's, anything that can strengthen our connections with other institutions is great.
Absolutely, it's been, and that particularly has been a goal of ours, uh, on a strategic plan to strengthen the, the connections with DPS, and it's something we, it's been done in fits and starts, but things like that are important. So, yeah, Alice's attendance there was, was key.
It looks like there are about six new volunteers in the archives.
So that's a, that's a continuous job for, for Becky, because, uh, and she's done a great job at recruiting and maintaining, uh, the, the recruits, the volunteers, but they're almost all retired, and eventually, they, you know, they retire from their, their retirement volunteer gig, you know, uh, and, and move on. So she, she's, she can't just rest on her laurel. Laurel, she's, she has to keep constantly recruiting people. And it's not, it's, it's not easy. I mean, this is a, this is a town that's big on volunteerism, uh, but that, that also, what that also tells you is you, most of the people you talk to already have a couple of irons in the fire. Uh, but the, but the folks that she has down there are very, very enthusiastic about it, and some of them are, you know, what Becky has taught herself about Decatur history in the six, seven years that she's been here is amazing, but these, uh, David Froman, uh, in particular, he's, he's a walking Decatur history teacher, and he's just absolutely amazing. And Pat Riley is another one, I gotta say, he does great work with, uh, displays and that kind of thing.
And Ms. Jerry's doing something with the library now? Or is it ongoing, or is it just a thing that's been, I love Ms. Jerry.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that was a one-time thing, but it doesn't mean, doesn't mean we can't keep doing it.
I love Ms. Jerry. She's great with kids. I think that, that plus two, uh, is that, I know I've mentioned this to children's library a few times, but if there's some way that we can work with, um, AR reading, because kids have to take these AR tests at school, and if there's like a way to have a librarian, maybe sort of somehow, because obviously the teachers in the classroom want to make sure the kid takes it, that it's supposed to be taking it, but maybe there's a way that we can work with that with the schools, and that would bring more kids into the library.
Well, there's been some discussion, I, I think, I think DPS is moving away from AR to, to, to something else. What's the, there?
What's A I S?
It's accelerated.
Mount Zion is still a bit, I think it's still a bit.
I, I, I can't remember what the new one's called, but that, now they've kind of moved away from AR, and they, so, so we're debating, well, one of the things we're debating is do we put those, do we start to find a way to put those levels into the record, the demographic record? The problem is then if they, you know, we put all that labor into that, and then the next year they said they don't want to do this one, and, uh, so if we can find something
I wasn't thinking about that, I wasn't thinking about actually, because the kids can look it up, parents can look it up.
And so can we, and they, and we.
What I was thinking was, is a way to coordinate with Decatur schools or Mount Zion schools, that the kids could come here and actually take the test, and they could be sent to the schools.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying.
And then that way you get kids in, and, I don't know, they would, they would have to be verified that the kids taking it, that's.
Well, we do, I would not vote for that. We, we do test practice for adults, uh, but we, we've never delved into it for, for kids.
I actually know that at Mount Zion, it can be very difficult for kids to be able to take an AR test, because they have one computer per classroom, and there are twenty-four kids per classroom, and they get ten minutes to take it, and so it's like one or two kids can take it, and like you can only take one or two a month, but you need more than that.
I, I'm just not a proponent of AR. I, I won't get into the details right now, but I'm just not a proponent of it.
Again, my, my understanding is DPS has moved away from AR, and they, but there is, but they've replaced it, and they didn't just, they've replaced it with something, and I know nothing about it. I, I, you know, I know there are arguments before and get, for and against AR.
Why are there many arguments for it, they're just maybe a concern?
Yeah, I had one dollar I was really bad for, and another dollar that it was good for, so. Uh, and, and something that, that, that didn't get on air, that we've been, almost every month, uh, we've been working with, uh, the Census Bureau. We're gonna make, uh, a couple of computers starting April next year, at least two, will be dedicated to, uh, census taking. And we will, uh, for that, for that purpose only, we will suspend, uh, some of the rules. So in other words, if somebody comes in here, right now, and they owe us five hundred dollars, you can't use the computer. But if it's to take the census, if it's on the census, we, we will allow, we will suspend , uh, those rules. Uh, we're going to allow them to recruit, uh, employees, uh, here, and, uh, hopefully we'll set up some, some trainings also. We want to do everything we can to help Decatur get a complete count of time. And that's something that's important to the Secretary of State's office, and obviously to Decatur.
What's the recruit employees?
What's that? They'll, they'll come here, they'll set up a table, uh, they'll set up a table in the lobby, uh, to recruit employees for the census.
Oh, here, okay, okay.
Non-Plaza library.
Correct, correct. And it'll be, it'll be temporary, it'll be a temporary job, of course, but.
Okay. So we're now ready to move on to reports from committees. And Dr. Ongar, we have, we have personnel policy and public relations.
So the lawyer report is in your packet, the list of requests that have been responded to, um, so you can see that list. And then, uh, Rick, if you want to give a brief personnel update.
Uh, and, and that's simply that, uh, we, well, a couple of things. We will not be adding the halftime library assistance that we had planned to, uh, mostly because of, uh, some, some budget thing. So we were gonna do that this year, but that would be an additional, additional hours, that would, uh, in a new position, not a, not a backfill. Since this committee meeting, we have, uh, I think I mentioned to you guys that Nancy Wong, uh, children's librarian, will be retiring after thirty-six years, and November sixth will be her last day employed. Uh, we interviewed, uh, an internal applicant for that job, uh, yesterday. Interview was very good, and we'll be making a decision, or we made a decision, we'll enter a decision tomorrow.
With equity, diversity, and inclusion, Rick sent out a link to the whole board or just to the PPR?
I think it was the whole board.
I think it was the whole board. And so I hope everyone either had a chance to look at some of the resources at that link, or, uh, we'll take an opportunity to look at some of the things on that link as we move to ensure that the, the policies and practices that we, that we have are in line with ALA's guidelines for equity, diversity, and inclusion. We tabled the photography and video policy. Uh, we tabled the photography and video policy for our meeting for next month. We had quite a bit of discussion about, uh, filming in the library as a public space and, uh, there was a clause in there that we wanted removed, but there's further discussion that we are gonna have about that, uh, what should be in there, so that will be tabled. Uh, in the packet is the references, uh, reference services policy, uh, and its revisions, so you could take a look at that.
Are your revisions on account?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is actually the number revised one, I apologize. Um, I'll tell you the changes that should be made on here. Paragraph two under introduction, uh, readers advisory, it will be, advisory will be capitalized, we'll add services. And as far as the italicized, uh, italicized stuff on the second page, um, the first italicized phrase will be kept and the next one will be struck up to the word and including the word or.
We can email the revised?
Yeah, I was, I was.
Do you have a redline version?
I, I've, I've got the, I've got the revised version, I'm sorry, the wrong one, this is the wrong one.
But do you have a redline version of the, you know, what changes, it's so easy to track the changes.
Uh, I don't, but I can very easily make them.
That's a little confusing right now.
Yeah, I apologize for that, that's, that's.
So, kind of a package to send it out and then, uh, we don't, we can't go work.
Yeah, we have, we have one that's, we have one that is recommended by committee.
Okay. So we will postpone voting on it.
No, I'll just include that in, in next, in next month.
Okay.
No, it'll be four.
Okay. Okay, next up is finance and property, so, Amy?
We talked about a number of things, including the parking lot, uh, but appears that it is on track, very few, many up to the, to the minute information on that, that there's actually some dirt going down and.
I thought today as well.
Yeah, we're excited about that. Um, uh, working on coming up with, and I want to talk to you, Greg, kind of long-term capital needs thing, just like at home, we know we've gotta have a basic understanding of funding, so we're gonna have to be replaced and, uh, all that sort of thing, so we're still working on that. Um, we discussed the check register, including travel expense detail and, um, recommended for a previous, probably five.
Okay, so we'll figure out a second to find the check register. And, um. This is the check register?
This is the check register and this is the, this is the backup for the, for, um, travel items that are part of the check register. So, um, but can you do that?
I want to make a motion to accept those presented.
Can I second the motion? And we'll have to go, um, you did vote, um, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Greg, to look at that sort of, uh, question.
Thank you. And then we looked at two information items, um, that Rick prepares for some monthly basis. These are analysis of current operations, so this, um, this report that has the shaded lines on it is a summary of current month operations. Rick, I understand that there were, uh, there was one change after we looked at it because the books were not yet closed and that was the receipt of the second distribution of property taxes. So now we will just be awaiting in December that last little bit after the tax.
Yeah, and, and it was a particularly low, uh, second dis- distribution, uh, the lowest, I, I went back and, uh, so if you discount the January disbursement that we, that we received, which was really from 2018.
Right.
Uh, and you, uh, we are at, uh, 90% collection rate for, uh, 2019. So after the second disbursement in 2018, we were at 96%. In 2017, 95%, 2016, 95%, 2015, 94%, 2014, 97%. So it's a particularly low, uh, low collection rate and I don't know if you heard anything about that or, um, and if we give our, our last collection is in line with past years, we would actually fall short of the, uh, 2842,000 if, if it weren't for that January distribution, uh, that was from 2018. So I don't, I don't know any details about that or, or have any explanation for it, uh...
Well, I mean, that's an issue, you know, this is the responsibility of the Lake County Treasury, the director.
The judge should be directing it.
Yeah, and I, maybe it all gets made up in December and there, there's nothing to complain about.
Well, maybe they have, maybe they have a lot of people that pay their, that pay their taxes now.
That would, that would be the reason.
That there would be such a shortfall.
They're, they're distributing the money that they receive.
Whatever they got.
Yeah, whatever they receive, so if it's, if it's below the, the tax levy is what's filled out.
Right.
Um, and we generally assume a 98% collection rate because that's, that's historically accurate. Um, so any, any number beneath that would be either the timing of when payments are made or it would be that they didn't, you know, people didn't pay your taxes.
Well, we'll add that to the list to check up on. Um, so revenue, we're at 75% a year, revenue is, is above the budget at the running rate, uh, including the all other items, which is good news. And all the major expense categories are below the running rate, um, in particular personnel, which has been something that we've been watching all along, that this, that has been below the running rate. So revenue of my expense basis, um, looks very good, two quarters through the year.
But now we don't anticipate any other, well, I guess there's a little bit of thing in this.
Right, right, right.
Supposed to come soon.
Or, you know, January.
Which would be late phase or processing or? I think it's both. I think it's a kind of an accounting thing plus.
Right, and so.
It'll be late payments and tax debt, right?
Right, and resolution of any pluses or minuses in all the tax money.
Right.
Okay, then the second thing that Rick has always, also comes every month is this report, which is called the budget projection, which he looks at the running rate of, uh, expense items versus the budget to look at where we're gonna be at the end of the year. Still showing that revenue has been, uh, they see budgets slightly and expenses are running under budget slightly, although some of the categories have changed, in particular in one of the things that he's talking about is software, services to office and, so that's, um, continuing, but I understand it's coming down.
Yeah, and we invested the 2020, uh, exactly. Uh, one thing might, maybe worth mentioning, I saw the October, uh, distribution of the second placement tax and, uh, and I think it gets us above this run already, it was, it was a, yeah, pretty, it was large, so.
But, I mean, it's definitely a bit small, anyway.
The last one usually is smaller, there's only one more, I think, and it usually is the same.
And I don't think we usually take action on this, this is just an information item, as it is for the committee. Then the next item, I'm not sure we really take action on, is Rick has, um, this is, you say it's your second graph, but I think it's your 14th.
Yeah, we, we even had a.
I was gonna say, I feel like I've seen more than two.
We even had, we had a tweak this morning, uh, and I'll, I'll, since the committee looked at it, I'll tell you what that is, and it's the, uh, the P P R T number. Uh, then on, we decided that, so I had for, uh, transfer from Meyer Fund, I had, uh, the exact figure for, that, that is for Leanne Grossman's salary, uh, she's the, the library system local history. Uh, I had the exact figure there and I rounded in, uh, the outline for the Meyer Fund, so, uh, we decided just to leave on on this, this one too. Uh, then, uh, then there's a combination of, so the administrative fee, you'll see, goes up, but, uh, purchasing went away. So it just folded purchasing into, uh, the administrative fees, those used to be teased out, so it's gonna be one fee now.
And, um, and in fact, that was kind of a big change, that the administrative fees in total, all of them, went down, um, and employee benefits went up, which was very much expected and administrative fee went down, very, very welcome. So you were able to, a combination of looking at more efficient staffing assignments and shaving things, few things off, some of the contingency items, um, brought us to the balance.
Well, some staffing has changed a little bit because of electronic, um, like the electronic checkout and, and check-in system and we managed to change our staffing as well.
We've, so we're looking at a, a 4% increase in, uh, revenues from 2019. Uh, we're looking at a 7% increase in personnel expenditures, but that is almost all, uh, on health insurance. Uh, the, the salary line actually is down 4% from last year. And as far as operating expenditures, uh, that is a, uh, 6% increase from last year and mostly that's accounted for, there's places that we, that we cut, uh, but it's accounted for just actual, actual costs that we're gonna see that we didn't, that we didn't account for in the 2019 budget, those software and some computer hardware. Now, we did make some, we did make some cuts in, you know, uh, for, for hardware, um, we were looking at replacing all 30 of the public access computers down there and we, we looked at the numbers hour by hour and we've just never had, it's never been full in the last few years. So hour by hour, they, they haven't, there's not been an hour where, uh, all of those computers were used, so there's no reason to spend the money to replace all of them. We're still, we're still debating exactly how many that, that we'll need, but it'll be, it'll be fewer than 30 and it'll, and plus man was able to upgrade some of the staff computers we had budgeted for, uh, this year. Rather than replacing the, the hardware, he's able to do some software, uh, that, that got him up to speed where they need to be, so that helped a lot.
Yeah, but I also want to say just about the process, that somebody talked about it committee, that there is involved his department heads in this process so that their awareness of the budget and the importance of the budget, you know, goes into the organization, which I think is super important.
Yeah, and I, I told you, the, the total library expenditures is up 6% from 2019, but the, 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 the operating expenditures minus personnel is up 3%, there's a 3% increase. It's, uh, you know, our biggest, our biggest, uh, our biggest change is, is that 64% increase in, in, uh, healthcare costs.
So.
Yeah, I have a question. Is there a budgetary crisis at, at the library?
I think so.
I mean, it doesn't appear so.
No, no, I mean, when we, when we first discussed this, uh, and I first gotten, I got numbers in from all my, uh, department heads, um, it wasn't looking, it wasn't looking good, but, you know, when we dove in deeper and found some places that we could cut and, uh, just not adding that to, we're also, uh, one of the full-time positions that will be vacated soon, will be backfilled at half times, which was agreed upon with the union in advance, uh, so that should be, that should be presented.
Well, you know, normal, normal occurrences, um, that I'm sure in your organizations you've all faced it, you know, when you ask, um, staff to put a budget together, the first pass of it generally is, uh, you know, you wish most.
Yeah, and, and that's.
And then things get, uh, you know, prioritized and they impaired back to, you know, to our, to normality.
Yeah, and they, and they, and they all did that, uh, they all found some, some ways, but, but mostly, uh, there, there wasn't a whole lot, uh, that we could cut in circulation, there wasn't a whole lot to cut in, in local history, uh, but in, in, uh, in systems and in, uh, uh, in programs, resources, and services, that's where we're able to find. And in programs, resources, and services, it was personnel, we're losing a job, it's just, we're not adding to the hours that we're coming to.
And, and the revenue growth of 4%, I think that's very good, it's above inflation.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, I agree.
That covers, that covers personnel expense increase and, uh, provides, you know, additional expenses for, you know, for potentially new programs, not a lot. Right, it does provide resources for that.
And, and this is with a, uh, so this will be the fourth, fourth year, uh, fourth budget year in a row that that, uh, property tax levy does, has not changed. So that's, that's a 4% increase without changing that levy, so, uh, it's, it's, you know, a lot of it's in P P R T, it's in pilot, uh, and one thing that we're going to have to look at long-term though, is that transfer from the Meyer Fund, because that, that fund won't last forever. So, you know, we've, I've gotta figure out a long-term plan for that.
You're, you're not using, in this budget, you're not using any of the Meyer money or are you?
Yes.
Okay, and is that still for that, that, that particular position?
How much is that in Meyer?
A couple hundred, quarter of a million dollars. No, not quite, not quite, so it's, uh...
We're putting that position back in.
Hundred, 126,000 and that, I, I'd hope to this year. So that was the other, that was, that was the other change that, so, so that's why it looks, it looked much worse a couple of months ago than it looks today, and that was one of the things also, that was another place. But, you know, at, at some point, we're gonna have to make a, a decision on, on, and find a way to, to fold that into the, the operating, that cost.
I'll say again, involving the department heads, I think, is important, so they know.
Yeah, absolutely, and they have, and they have, uh, some, uh, authority to spend without, without coming in. And so to give them that authority, when them not knowing what they have doesn't really make sense, right?
Right.
And I still owe them some deliverables on that, but we'll be, we'll be.
So the committee recommends approval of the budget as, as Rick has altered it and presented it?
Second.
Do you think this individually?
I think so.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Just, but just, I do have a question. The, uh, you know, to Rick's comment, the tax levy, the city council, the city Decatur Illinois, has, has, um, kept the, the tax levy as applies to the library flat for the last several years and, um, and, and essentially, um, in general terms, the tax levy for the city has been relatively flat.
Okay.
Uh, there have been some periods in that time where maybe there's been some increase for some specific purpose, but, um, you know, soon, they're, the, the tax levy comes up again, you know, they'll vote on it sometime in, in November and, you know, and it might be worthwhile to, you know, maybe create a letter and send a letter to the, to the, to the city council, to the American City Council, you know, just, you know, coming from the board, just with opinion, you know, that, that, I mean, if, if nothing else, just saying, you know, the levy's been fat for a number of years, um, you know, it's putting pressure on, on the budget, um, you know, there's been inflation, you know, blah, 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 you know, just to address it that way. Um, don't know what they'll do, you know, they'll take that into account, but it's, but it's possible. Better to say something than nothing at all.
And then the, the projection on E A B is still decline?
It, it's.
My, my second one up.
Yeah.
I got the.
It's, it's, uh...
Well, this is what I wanted to know, and I've been on the township board and I, I should probably know this better, but.
but I know everybody in the West End has had, has had an increase, a significant increase, not a minor, but how does that play into the city?
Well, well, what, what-
Or is that only the township?
Well, you know, I mean, Decatur Township is the vast majority of the city of Decatur. I mean, I don't know turf-wise, but, you know, assessment.
Well, the policy is gone, is gone now toward West End and the surrounding area of West End.
But, but a couple, a couple things have happened, it, it's, there's not one thing you can point to that says it affects everybody, because, you know, it depends on property valuations, how they, how they value different properties. The city's also lost, properties that were taxed were determined to be, in the last few years, were determined to be tax exempt, and so the, the city lost assessment value from that. You know, that's hurt, you know, maybe where there was the increase that you're talking about, when individual homeowners or businesses or whatever, you know, had an increase in assessment value, and then therefore an increase in taxes that they paid, this, the, the assessment value maybe declined or stayed flat, because properties that were taxable were made tax exempt, okay?
I was only making individuals' tax, I'm not sure if I'm, but ours, I mean, a thousand dollars, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, two thousand dollars.
And, and, and again, it's, but, but let's say, when you look at the tax bill, you know, your, your, your tax bill-
I know it's small, I know it's small.
But, no, but what I'm saying is, you know, your tax bill's in total, you know, the city itself represents, you know, sixteen percent of the tax bill, you know?
Right.
Decatur School Corporation, School District, represents fifty percent-
Right.
-of, of the tax bill, so, you know, all those together, you know, when you see the assessment value in total, when you see the tax bill, unless you're looking very much into detail, you know, what you're seeing is, is your first look at is the total, you know, and, and everyone's either, some are contributing to that, some are not.
Right, I get it, I get, I get.
And also, sometimes where you live is a, where you get an extra boost, or an extra boost so you can have more money.
And the, and the other thing that's happened in the last year is, is the state legislature has, has passed legislation that, that increased exemptions to certain classes of the community, you know, whether it's a, I don't know, particular class, I, I can't schedule right now, but, but again, you know, that, that led to less assessed, assessed value, because more groups or more people got tax exemption, or they got tax exemption at higher levels. I mean, one of, one of the things that hurts, that's hurting the community in large part, and, and I think hurting, hurting the library, is we're not getting organic growth in the assessment value, so, you know, so, I mean, the tax levy, you know, the, the council, whoever the governing body is, they have to say, we need X number of dollars, and they vote on that, approve that, and then, and then, you know, the tax rate falls out wherever the tax rate falls out. But a lot of times, they're trying to say, they're trying to, we, we want, we don't, we want the tax rate to be the same from year to year to year, and that approach, you know, if assessment value goes down, then tax revenue goes down.
The denominator's declining, therefore, yeah, the rate, the rate is increasing, and the only way around that is, you know, growth and growth and-
And, and, and just one, one last comment, I mean, just for, for maybe understanding, because it troubles us, or is a dilemma for us, that we, you know, have, we have, we don't have a way to resolve, but, but, you know, all the development that's occurred downtown, okay, downtown is part of the Old Town Tip, basically from Franklin Street all out to, where is it, to Oakland, I think, something like that, and there's been no incremental assessment value gain in the Old Town Tip. So all of the projects that have happened downtown, all of the things that have approved downtown, you know, the, the, there's been no incremental growth, and, and, and that's hurt, you know, because certainly, you know, you look, you look at the downtown, you look at the downtown today versus what it looked like seven years ago, I mean, it's, it's, it's-
Radically different.
Radically different.
And it's hard to find parking, which I love, because I mean, the census are huge.
Exactly, right, yeah, but anyhow, but, but it might be, you know, we might think about just sending a kind letter to the mayor of the council, just to, geez, you know, help.
I have a question. On the, um, other grants, what other grants are either in the process or?
That's, that's, that's in there, in case.
Yep.
Okay, one of the things we're gonna need to look at this year is an LSTA grant, that's the Library Services and Technology, that's a federal grant that's administered by the state, and, and, and it can pay for things like computer hardware, so that's-
It's kind of a placeholder in the budget.
Right, exactly, just, so it, it's, it's easier to manage, accounting-wise, any grant if you have an in-line for it and an outline for it, it's not, it's, it's, at this point, it's a placeholder. But we, you know, we also are considering foundation and friends' money as credits too.
This is one of the reasons why the census group is so interested in collaborating with libraries, because Illinois is expected to show an outflow of population, so every head count counts in the amount of money that we get from this, yeah, well, it comes through the state library. So, but, yes, IMLS, and then they send it to Illinois, and then that's reduced as well, so.
Yeah, and that's, the, the, the state grants are, the two state grants that we look at are Project Next Generation and, and also the, the Per Capital Grant, which we're about to get started on, and that's a maximum of a dollar and a quarter ahead. Only one year since I've been here have we not received a maximum, it was something like seventy-five cents that year, every other year we've gotten a dollar and a quarter, but, so that count that we get in twenty, that's ten, ten years it's gonna last us, so that's gonna set that revenue for ten years, so it's really important that we get everybody's hand in it.
I have, I have just two more really brief items, one is we've started, we've asked Rick to do a travel expense request for upcoming trips, and we looked at his proposed trip to PLA conference. We'll say-
Yeah, that, that wasn't in, uh, wasn't discussed in committee.
Oh, that was the other one.
But I, I went ahead and booked it so that I didn't get stuck with the, the, you know, only the most expensive, only the most expensive hotels, it can easily be canceled, but that's, this is a-
So, before then, tell us what PLA did-
So that's Code Library Association Conference, it's gonna be held, it's ever, held every two years. For us, it's, it's, it's the conference, it's, it's much more targeted for us than the American Library Association Conference is, and it's relatively close. I will almost certainly drive, but airfare is cheaper, so that's what I put my, I showed you my search for airfare, and the airfare would be two hundred and eighty-eight, plus the travel to the Boynton Airport, which would be fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. The lodging is seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Estimated meals, that is the maximum allowed, so come in under that, but the maximum is two hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents, and the registration is three hundred and five dollars. I've got the supporting documents here. The other thing I wanted to say is, I sent you guys an email saying I was gonna rescind my request to go to the IHLS meeting because the foundation's never made, the foundation rescheduled me for the day before, so I can go to the IHLS annual board meeting, so I don't wanna rescind that request, so.
That's the one where they've said, our prices, right?
Uh, yeah, and I'm not sure that, that that's going to be voted on, I haven't seen the agenda, but I think it's important that the, the largest library in the system to have a representative at that, but it certainly will be discussed, and I'll be talking about that in a little bit in the IHLS report.
The PLA, where's it at?
Nashville, okay.
Okay, when is it?
It is in February.
Oh, okay.
So, shall we submit this, bring this forward for approval?
Any, any questions about the supporting documentation?
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, I'm assuming the reason why you prefer to drive as opposed to, I mean, as opposed to fly is- Well, he said flying was cheaper.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm saying.
No, but the amount of time he's gonna spend going from airport to airport to airport, it's actually gonna save him about five hours each leg to drive as opposed to fly.
Our policy says that, it says whichever's cheaper, but you can do whatever, you can, if you wanna drive, that's fine, but if flying would've been cheaper, that's, that's the cost that you're saying.
So you, so you would get reimbursed for the flight, but you could just drive it?
Right, but dri, driving the reimbursement would be significantly higher than that.
Right, okay.
And driving does not include parking costs that you might have?
Well, then it would be a hundred and ninety dollars at the hotel, so-
That's an additional.
Yeah, so that's not-
Cost to drive it.
Right, and I would be bearing that cost because that would be an additional cost.
So the-
No, I'm saying if you drove to Nashville-
Thirty-six dollars more to drive it.
But we're only gonna reimburse him for this amount.
For the two hundred and eighty-eight plus the fifty-nine, even if I choose to drive, this is the-
This is a less expensive.
So, yeah, the policy says whatever's less expensive, that's what the, the, the employee is reimbursed for.
That's the maximum.
Correct. Does, does the policy say that, that when you, as an employed library, travel, that you're required to pay any expense out of pocket? I mean, if, if, at the end of the day, you're traveling on library, on business from library, will it cost you money out of pocket?
Yeah, it will, and, and if I drive, it will, if I, if I actually booked that flight, it wouldn't.
I, I guess for me, the, the issue that I have is that how much is your time worth? It's thirty-six dollars more for you to drive and to fly.
No, it would be, it would be, it would be much more than thirty-six, uh, because you, because you, because you're part of-
Well, with parking-
That's my point, that was my point.
Yeah, without parking, just the mileage reimbursement, would be thirty-six dollars more.
So, two twenty, or something like that.
Okay. Rick's request is in line with the policy, the town's policy.
Did you have anything to add, or say?
No. Rick is following the policy, and he can do whatever he wants.
Right, well, if, if I'm, if I'm reimbursed for the lower amount, and I choose to, and I choose to take the more expensive amount, then yes, I am responsible for those, I am responsible for those additional costs.
Okay, so I think you're per procedure, we're good.
So we need to-
Rip to vote on it?
I would like a motion to approve Rick's request.
I like, I made a motion to approve it.
I'll send. Yes, vote on my one.
I.
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 I. I.
And I just have one more item before, at the end here. I just want to, and I talked about this at the committee meeting, the Secretary of State sent us a link to a tri-it program where they're making an incredible number of commercial databases available for us to look at, and, you know, people say, well, we can just get it on the internet. Well, somebody has to pay for those databases, right, and we pay for some of them, some of them the Secretary of State pays for. So the Secretary of State is asking all of the trustees to look at the resources available to see if there are any that they should add to what they're purchasing, or that we would like to purchase low. I did a real preliminary look, there's an incredible amount of information, there isn't, it isn't really clear about pricing, so I think that if we were interested in something, we need to let Rick know, and he could evaluate what the price was, but I, it's just a, it's kind of an amazing resource, it's only available, I believe, till the end of November, so I just would encourage everybody to, if you have some time, to look at it. And that's the end of my report.
Rick, our foundation is not meeting, we are meeting.
The annual meeting is, is on the twenty-eighth. And we got the letter finished for the manual appeal, I talked to staff, and it should be, I think the target date for extending will be November fourth, and I think we can, the databases up to date, the donor databases is, has been updated with the input that we got from all the foundation board members.
Okay, so we're ready for President Alvaro.
Having met on October tenth, um, Sue from the Children's Department, one half of Ridiculous came in to thank you for the T-shirts for Ridiculous Junior, it sounds like they had a good turnout of kids that are participating, and, that was this week, wasn't it, it was Tuesday? They're, I think they had their finale performance, so that was actually this week. Spots Between Bites, last month, they weren't quite sure of the exact numbers that were there, but there was quite a crowd for Susan Day who, who've been there, and next month, Randy Raymond, it's the first Wednesday of every month, Randy Raymond is presenting on Jazz and the Raiders Craft. He's a musician.
Jazz and the Raiders Craft?
Mm-hmm.
Whoa.
Uh, right now, we have three hundred and three members, and about nine thousand donations so far, about two thousand dollars from last year, and we had our Labor Day book sale, kind of recap, we grossed two twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, which is a strange amount, and, just because the hot, the prices are, you know, even more than fifty cents, but it looks like there was a profit of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and twelve cents, so that was after all-day expenses, and it was about the same as last year, and so, some of it was because they, we didn't have the TV ads that we had bigger before, because there was a corporate sponsor, so a lot of people saw those ads, and there were a couple other advertising things that were kind of, they weren't able to do because somebody got sick, and so, but it seemed to go well, and there was a lot of good feedback on it, so we'll just change a few things for next year.
I think, I think it also fell on a weird date, because of the date, like, I had more going on that weekend than I normally do that weekend.
I mean, it's Labor Day.
Like, school stuff, no, but I mean, no, because of the schools and because of the athletic calendar, the athletic calendar was all screwed up because of the date that it was on, like, things that happened the week before were happening now, anyway, so on and so forth, there was a-
Yeah.
Conflict.
Yeah, conflict.
Always conflict.
Yeah.
But more than the year before, or the year before, same sports, but more conflicts.
Are you doing any programs for the National Normal Order Month? I see there's a display downstairs.
We haven't been asked for them, or anything, so. There weren't any other, there weren't any other asks for anybody this, this month.
We don't, you don't run around offering to give people money.
Well, I mean, like, if, if it came to us with an idea, we'd be, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we're on to Heartland Library's report.
The executive council took into consideration on October third, the membership fee scale that was presented to us by the finance committee. They showed us the projected costs over the next few years, and how much membership would have to increase, and what they proposed to us was a very sharp increase for 2020, followed by very nor, very modest increases the next three years. The council, and it's based on member input, and also the council, we, we recommended that it be made more level over the next five years. I think for us, I'd rather take the hit in year one and, and take smaller increases, but that's, that's really tough on the smaller libraries who are, right now, sort of scrambling to figure out how they're going to need the minimum wage increase, so the best thing to do for share as a whole is to have that, have that increase be a little more gradual. So that's gonna go back to finance committee, and eventually, the, the final decision will be made by the IHLS board. And we're the, as the largest library in here, we pay the highest, the highest membership fee, so we'll be, when it's all said and done, and at the end of this, I think it's gonna be about forty-four thousand dollars annually, and it's something that, you know, I think every couple of years at least, we should put on the table, as, you know, something that, you know, I mean, I think that, I think that it's great for our, our community, for our patrons. our patrons, you know, forty-four thousand dollars a year, I think we always need to, every few years at least, examine it and see, are, is the cost benefit, and you'll see from, if you look at the ILL reports, you see that we send more than we receive, and most, in most cooperative consortiums, the largest library is usually a net borrower. The University of Illinois is, I think, second or third largest collection, library collection in North America, and they are a net borrower in Charlotte, they borrow more than they lend, so, which, you know, but they are, so, we need to, we need to keep on looking at it, I mean, my, my inclination is that it's a good thing, but if that discrepancy, you know, widens, that may not...
Then we're not getting as much from those other libraries we're getting from us, we're paying more than they're paying.
Yeah, and, and we should, we have the, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's based on that ability.
I also feel like we should be...
But, but one...
Ratio usage.
Yeah, but one big thing, though, is also the diversity of the collection, because the collection is spread out, we don't have to do everything, right?
That's right.
No, but that's everything.
There's, there are, there are savings there that are, are hard to quantify, but are there, you know, I mean, you can let another library focus on certain subjects, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I, I mean, I know personally, I have used that system a lot, borrowed very weird books, that there's really no reason for them to own here, where, I mean, they're crafting books, they're not that weird, but, you know, it's too rare.
Does the percentage of contribution that, that you make to share, how does that equate with the percentage of, you know, the volume of items that you're sharing, or that you're, you know, you're receiving? Is that, is that...
So, are you talking about, like, a per doc, a, a transaction cost?
Or are you contributing thirty, thirty percent of the, of the fee, you know, that thirty percent of the fee that they collect in total comes from a hated public library for share, but you're only using ten percent of the...
That'd be, I, I never, I never came out from that, from that, I think, so that's, that's interesting, so...
I think it's hard to, like, quantify it, because it's not like, it's not like a volume, it's more like a specialty, you know, having access to specialty materials, that wouldn't have a lot of...
Well, I mean, your materials are DVDs or whatever, I mean, that's, I mean, you don't always have the materials other libraries do, because it has to be bestie or DVD anything.
Yeah, and there's no library so small that they don't have a unique item, I mean, you know, even the tiniest libraries will often have something that nobody else has.
But there's a law not to have to buy as many.
Right, absolutely, right, yes, that's the, that's the, that's the hidden, that's the hidden savings, but I, I, it's, I, I haven't looked at it from, from that angle very...
I mean, just be curious to see what that is, so what we're doing, if we do it, at least we would know.
No, we'd be, yeah, and I, I guess my, my, to me, the most important thing to look at is that, is that discrepancy of, so we're about fifty-four percent of our total ILL transactions are outflow, so, if that gap widens, you know, we need to see what we can do to narrow it, you know, maybe we need to promote the services more, you know, that, that could be a possibility, but, you know, if it, if it gets much wider, that's, that's when we need to think more about it, but it's, it's a large cost, I think it's a, I've, I've worked in another state, and I can tell you that the internal library loan system is way cumbersome, and you can't, I mean, it's not just the, the delivery, it's also the database, so you have access, you can search our catalog, and you have access to four hundred and fifty other catalogs, so, and that's really important, it's just, the ease of use for the user is, is really important, but it's, I think that the, the thing to keep an eye on, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna see if I can get at that, at that figure, but I think the thing to keep an eye on is that the discrepancy between items out and items in.
What makes it more complicated is the fact that we also have crossbar, so we can, you can, you can go into Forsythe, that's true, just browse or shelves, order nature Decatur, have some Forsythe, the crossbar, we make it, you know, it's a real tough time.
It doesn't...
Yes, yes, it's a good service.
We've done that library, we probably got, what, eight libraries?
Yeah.
And from an operational standpoint, it's pretty, the system works well, right?
It works, it works great, it's very, I mean, it's low impact for us, I mean, we, you know, Robert's staff puts quite a bit of, of labor into it, but not like you would do if you were doing, I mean, in Iowa, it's fine, and the librarian has to, the librarian has to, and then you get reimbursed for what you spend on the mail, you know, in a year, it's... And you don't get reimbursed for the, you get, you get reimbursed for the postage, but not for the packaging, you know, it's just, we reuse everything a hundred times, and, and, and the patron doesn't know what other libraries have, unless they go to each library's website and look it up, or they ask a librarian, librarians could search across the state, but patrons could not.
Whereas for us, you just, you look up on our website, and you can't, if you request something, you don't know where it's gonna come from.
Right, it just comes.
Yep. Illinois, Illinois and Ohio have always been the forefront of resource sharing, and it's just, when I, when I would tell people in Iowa how it works in Illinois, they were just amazed, but...
Okay, this is my question, and I know it's kind of a weird question, but, you know, I buy them, and I out the country, and I see, like, make, like, their library looks like it's about the size of this room, what happens if a place like that folds? Would it be something that we, the city of Decatur, would offer the making people to pay fees to some library?
This board, this board can enter into a, could enter into a contractual agreement with that city.
Okay, that's, I was just curious about that, because I just have noticed a few very teeny-weeny libraries that...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's two ways it could work, and that would be the most common way for a city library, they could off, they could, they could enter into a contractual agreement, the board can do that, so, the other, the other way is to become district, and that's...
Does, does anything prevent you from, this library from just offering memberships, you know, residents, participate free?
Well, if you, so the law...
Could you offer memberships to anyone who's making...
So the law says that if you are in a, in an unserved area, so if you don't...
Has to be an unserved area.
Yes, if you don't pay any library taxes, then you can purchase a library card from the nearest library, that's the only way that could be done, but we can, but, but the board can enter into a contractual agreement with another governmental, another public body.
And even a public body that has a library, for that to be unserved.
I think they have to be unserved, they'll pull down that one, I think they have to be unserved.
Okay, old business, I don't think we have any old business on the agenda, public or access to other standards.
So, system of the mill net, membership responsibilities, this is, I, I, it's kind of what we've been talking about in the last few minutes, so the one things I wanna point out that, on the checklist side, if you, the, next to the bottom, it says the Library Director, Library Staff, and Library Board Members Act, board participants, members of boards, committees, task forces, advisory councils, at various levels, including regional library system, local state library system, and the Illinois Library Association. Robert Edwards has served on many IHLS committees, I've served on IHLS and ILA committees, Alyssa Henkel has been active in, in ILA, Becky Gamps just came back from the MAX conference in Fargo, and she is set to get involved, that's the Midwest Archives Council, and she's set to get involved with them, on perhaps even a board level, and at one time, we had a, John Phillips served on the IHLS board, so at some point, he'd be asking for a volunteer to do something like that from, from this board, and, and, you know, next time, they like to have somebody from a large public library sitting on the IHLS board, so that would be, and although there is, just to let you know, although there is some travel involved, it's not that bad, because we have an IHLS meeting hub in, in the ADM lab right over here, we've got, it's the big screen, and you can attend meetings electronically. I think the only, perhaps committee, but I think the annual meeting is gonna be that requires physical attendance, does that sound right? Yeah. So, it's something that, that we do pretty well on, I think, on the, on the staff level, and, you know, hopefully we can get somebody from this board on, on a committee or something in the next year or two.
I guess I can realize that you just watched everybody's video comments, but that's what you're saying, age is expensive, and I'm surprised, we're spot on gas.
Yeah, we've had, this is the librarian at, the woman's president, she's been on the IHLS board, and she's here on the floor.
Okay, thank you, Rick, I think that takes us to option to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Aye.